Mine or yours?
Yeah, that's mine.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good morning. Sorry, I started really tired when you were turning around. Uh, next is approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is approval of the minutes.
I will move to approve the minutes from last week.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is approval of claims for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve claims for payment.
Second it.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Uh, we are past the ten oh two mark, so I will go ahead and open a public hearing for the sale of county-owned property located near the county road maintenance shop, lot number nine, and south nineteen foot of lot ten and north seven foot of lot eight, block four, J.D. Thompson's addition, Eldora, Iowa. Any, this is time for any public comment, if anybody has anything to say? Were there any written comments? Okay.
I, I have a question. Does that go, the money from the sale of that, does that go into the secondary roads fund or the general fund?
I don't know. The answer is yeah.
County-owned property, I think, too, but I don't know.
Say general, too.
I was just like, uh, curious, so... Because they asked me on the claim side for that, too, for the advertisement, if Daryl had to pay for that or the supervisor paid for the publication, and I said, well, I suppose it depends who gets the money, because if Daryl gets the money and it's fun, he should pay for the publication, but if it's going to the general, then I would think that the publication would be the supervisor's, and that's what I said.
Who bought the property out there in the beginning, from what you're asking? Yeah. That might be something we need to look into, see who actually bought it, if secondary roads would have bought land or would it have been? I would just think the county would have.
No.
I'm guessing it's all general fund and then pays publication out of our budget.
Yeah.
If that works for me, I just was curious.
Oh no.
Okay.
Wow. Any other public comments?
Who records that, do you?
You.
I don't know.
The new one.
Rick.
Didn't quote it.
Okay. Wait, whatever's written, however Rick had it written up, from the attorney?
Normally, it's the purchaser that records and pays the fees.
So they'll need to go to the reporter's office?
Yes.
Any more con, public comments? I can ask that, a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close, close the public hearing, sale of county-owned property?
I'll second.
It's been moved to second, close the public hearing, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is a resolution approving the sale of county-owned property. For that lot, we just had the public hearing on. We auctioned it off, uh, a month ago, pretty close.
Well, since there are no negative comments, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving the sale of the county-owned property.
I'll second it.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Ron.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. I'm already to the ten ten time, so I can go ahead and move forward and do the public hearing on the animal feeding operation construction permit, Shager Holdings, Inc., three fifty-nine pork, section fifteen, Buckeye Township. Anything for us?
Um, I can give a quick, uh, review of what we're doing here. Uh, my name's Ken Kraus of Pinnacle, and we did the permit application form, but, uh, this is another, uh, what I call non-construction, paperwork expansion, so there's no construction on the site. Uh, just want to add a hundred and sixty-two head of capacity, uh, on the site, uh, just for an opportunity to overstock, uh, when they put the, when they first put the pigs in. So, uh, site was first built in two thousand and one, uh, it had a building expanded in two thousand and five. Uh, we won't be adding any acres in the manure plan, uh, there's already, uh, sixteen hundred acres in the plan. All of those fields score in the very best category for the Iowa phosphorus risk index, so they're good, good, solid, uh, uh, fields from a conservation perspective. The master matrix, we're required to rescore the master matrix. It scores, uh, four hundred and sixty-five points today of the required four forty. Uh, some of the highlights on that scoring, they would have achieved a maximum of a hundred points, uh, for extra distance away from residences, uh, would have, uh, scored maximum points of thirty, extra distance away from public use areas. They scored the maximum thirty points, extra distance away from churches, schools, and businesses. Uh, they scored the maximum of thirty points, extra distance from water, uh, that'd be from any water source. Uh, they scored extra points for being away from critical public areas. Uh, they scored the maximum of fifty extra points for being extra distance away from major water. So again, no major water in the area either. Um, there's no high-quality water in the area or protected water areas, so they got points for that. Of course, their below-building pits, so they got extra points for being covered manure storage, and of course, it's, uh, cement pits, so they got, uh, points for using cement storage in lieu of what you don't see much anymore, be the earth and basins or legumes. Has a truck turn around to get the trucks in off the highway, uh, when they're backing up to the buildings. They've had no administrative orders ever on that site. Um, by size, it's still in the smallest category, so they get maximum points allowed on it of twenty, and they're utilizing a wet-drive feeder technology, which wastes less water, creates less manure on an annual basis, so they get points for that. And they've committed to injecting or incorporating the manure on the same day they apply it, and that commitment lasts for the life of the facility. So, with those points, uh, it totals four hundred and sixty-five points, uh, of the four forty required, so that's, I guess, a brief summary. Uh, if you have any other specific questions, I'd try to answer those at this time.
Just, no, you answered it. It's no extra construction, just adding hogs to the same buildings?
Yes.
Uh, any other public comments? Any written comments? I'll ask to, uh, motion to come out of the public hearing again.
Make a motion to come out of the public hearing?
Second.
It's been moved to second to close the public hearing, all, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Next is a recommendation on the animal feeding operation construction permit, Shager Holdings, Inc., three fifty-nine pork, section fifteen, Buckeye Township.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation on the animal feeding operation construction permit for Shager Holdings, Inc., three fifty-nine pork, section fifteen, Buckeye Township.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next, we have Chris Whiting regarding trail update authorization signed letter to release escrow funds for the salvage yard.
Good morning. Uh, we'll start with the, uh, letter, um, in regards to releasing the escrow. Uh, this, this letter for the escrow, uh, was tied to our salvage operations that were taking place. Iowa River Railroad had negotiated that with a salvage crew, and, uh, through that process, uh, we are ready to release the escrow funds of seventy, uh, not fully seventy thousand dollars that had been set aside. Uh, to give you a background on this, Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation was the original owner of the property and negotiated all the salvage, and unfortunately, Harding County was not at the table, uh, during that process. Um, and with that being said, uh, where we're at today, uh, we had, we originally, uh, wanted to, or felt we should be privy to that full escrow, based on the salvage that had taken place and some extra material, um, that was not salvaged on the property. Unfortunately, the, the salvage lease and the, and that, that we hold, uh, that is also tied to, uh, the lease that the salvage company, uh, was, uh, a part when that was negotiated where additional rail or additional ties that are still on the property to date are considered industry ties, um, which is a common phrase in the railroad, uh, in the railroad, and that those were not part of that salvage operation. And so, ties that have historically and, and are, that have been on the railroad, um, so things that have been sitting there for the last thirty-plus years, uh, in most cases, are still going to be there, and those will be cleaned up as we go through the construction process. So, the, the, the grants and the funding, uh, that we'll be doing the construction with, if there is areas that we need to clean up, those will be cleaned up. Uh, but nothing will have changed based on what the railroad had before and where we're at today. If the railroad, if Iowa River Railroad still held this, tho- those ties are still going to be sitting there, just like we're, we're holding it today. Um, however, we have negotiated with Iowa River Railroad, a couple areas, uh, that we felt they failed in their lease responsibilities. Uh, one was maintenance of the trail. Uh, through this past year, they were to have done, uh, weed mitigation and, and taking care of those responsibilities. They failed to do that, and so we're asking for an amount of seventy-five hundred dollars, uh, to be held out of that escrow to help defer those, to help those costs as we make up, uh, for, for the lack of that being done. And then there was also an additional two thousand dollars we're held, holding out for an extension of lease terms, as they were supposed to be completed with their, with salvage as of August first of last year, um, and, uh, and that two thousand dollars goes to pay for some, the extra time, uh, in notifying us. Uh, you know, this has been, yeah, negotiated with their attorneys, with our county attorney and our group. Um, Trails Incorporated was, was involved in that negotiation. We felt like this was a, uh, a good place to be and to put the salvage issue behind us and, you know, work on the next phases of our project, so...
So you say seventy-five hundred dollars for the weed control?
Seventy-five hundred dollars for weed control that they failed to do last year.
Are we going to be able to, like, clean it up for seventy-five hundred dollars?
We feel that we'll be able to get on top of that, and then it'd be, you know, our normal maintenance, uh, responsibilities would have kicked in. Uh, you know, this year, as I think we're all dealing with the, we are in a, uh, almost the, the best growing conditions that I, I remember seeing in, in many years. Uh, so we are, we're trying to, we're learning about, uh, what we need to do, uh, to, to mitigate those weeds. We've been, we've sprayed once, we're going to have another spraying. Uh, we're looking into ways that we can extend that spraying, uh, over the berms. Uh, with the salvage operation, they did leave windrows, uh, when the ties and the rail was removed. Uh, so accessing some of the extended, uh, extension over the rail bed, um, has been a learning curve for us, and we're working on, uh, taking care of that, because we know there's some issues there, and we've, you know, that there's, there's weeds that are coming up in those areas, and we're trying to, trying to hit those. And so we'll be addressing that here before the summer's out, and that'll be a part of the maintenance and weed control addressing in the future.
Any other questions?
Regbri, how'd that go?
Yeah, uh, quick trail update. You know, we got through Regbri. Uh, we're all taking a big sigh of relief. Uh, it was a great event. Eldora looked wonderful. Um, a great exposure for our trail. Uh, yeah, we, we missed out on our fundraising goals. At the same time, I think, uh, being that we don't experience Regbri every year and know the ins and outs of it, um, there's a lot of different ways that, uh, Regbri dollars can be pulled in different directions, and, uh, we weren't, uh, we weren't selling food, we weren't selling anything other than, and, and so from the standpoint of funds coming in, we were short on our, we were, had a pretty high goal of ten thousand dollars, we're short of that. We're still seeing where we're coming out, because funds, fundraising, uh, funds are still coming in from, from that standpoint. Uh, the biggest, uh, uh, goal for us, though, was, uh, information and getting that out to the general public, and we felt we did a very good job of that. Uh, just, and the folks that stopped by, we had two booths, uh, one on our showcase trail, and if, and if people haven't already seen that, uh, that's the one-block section between Hy-Vee and, uh, um, and the Thrive and Hurley building that was completed. Uh, that's, I think, went a long way to showing people what this was going to be like. We had a lot of positive comments. Uh, thankfully, in Iowa, there is a tradition of hard-surface trails, and that's not seen across the country, uh, as such, and so a lot of positive feedback. Uh, positive feedback not only from people around Iowa, people on Regbri, um, had a lot of, uh, feedback from area citizens and residents, um, and I think that's as important as anything we did for Regbri is, I, we feel that we now have, uh, a vision of what this can be. Uh, people are seeing what this is going to be, and we've had a lot of positive response from that. So, um, yeah, we're through Regbri. Our next steps are, uh, starting to work on our projects for two thousand and sixteen and, uh, buttoning up, uh, some of those things that we had to kind of put to the side, because Regbri was such a big event for all of us.
More questions for?
No, thanks, Chris.
I want the full seventy thousand.
Understand.
But I've already been hammering on you for that, so...
No. We tried. Uh, if, if it would have been possible to get the full seventy, I, I think we would have, you know, at the same, you know, part of this, uh, we wanted, uh, we do want some, some mutual agreements. Um, Iowa River Railroad still owns, uh, quite a bit of rail here in Harding County, and, uh, I, you know, our project's a long-term project. Uh, we don't know what the next, uh, twenty, thirty years, you know, involves, and if other rail opportunities come up, uh, hopefully this does put us in a position to be first on the list to be able to explore those as extensions of this trail, so...
Good.
Thanks.
Sign a letter to release escrow funds from the salvage. I don't have a letter for that, do I?
Should have had that. It should have been forwarded to you by county attorney's office. I have a copy of it. That letter will be forwarded on Iowa Natural Heritage, who...
Is there, is there a deadline on this letter to be done?
Uh...
To be signed?
As soon as, as soon as possible. That was our whole day. That county attorney had forwarded that on two days.
Oh, yeah, I did, I did.
It's been a few weeks ago that she was...
Yeah, I'm good.
Hello?
Are you good, Lance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm open for a motion.
Lance, excuse me, but I can say something regarding this. I'm going to ask supervisors not to sign this letter until I get cooperation from Iowa River Railroad, Whitner Construction, and I.A.S., all who are involved in this rail salvage. I've incurred sixteen thousand, four hundred dollars worth of stolen rail at my siding and over twelve thousand dollars worth of damage to the site. They stole my siding rail and left that siding a mess. They've lied to me and refused to, to answer my phone calls, Whitner has, who's placating me, telling me that he'll get back to me, he'll get back to me, he'll get back to me. Whitner will be down to talk to me, Whitner will be down to talk to me. This has gone on since May. I have made three calls today, and every time he's unavailable to talk to me. Brokemmer is just not playing fair on this. If you guys give them that money, I'm never going to get my satisfaction.
Yours is on a private side of your rail?
Yes. Chris has been up there and seen the mess they left him.
The, the problem I have is this doesn't have to do with that. I understand what you're saying, but this is, this is the, our portion of the property.
You give them, you give them that money, and he's going to conclude that everything's fair and settled. And it's going to acknowledge to them that that was part of the rail. That was a private siding. That was a private siding donated, that siding. Every time I had anything to do with it, I had to go call the U.P. Railroad, and I had to pay for everything myself in that siding. It's a private siding. Whitner stole those rails, and that's all he took, was the rail and the tie plates. He left the old ties in the ground, it didn't do anything.
On your property?
On our property. I, Dave Iggeson. These guys are playing fast on this, and they're trying to spike this buy. They were kicked off of the siding owned by the city here. They were down there, and Deb Crosser told me that they had to get police down there and have them get off that siding. They tried to do the same thing down there. I was gone into the hospital when they were up there. They took those rails out, and that's all they did. They took the rails, tie plates, and spikes. They never touched, very few ties.
They took out some ties.
They just ripped them up and took them. I called the D.O.T. at Ames. The D.O.T. had called Brokemmer, and then Brokemmer called me and said that they would be getting back to me and Whitner would be down here. That was thirty-seven days ago, and now Brokemmer will not answer me. Brokemmer is Iowa River Railroad.
Hey, has, uh, have you been to an attorney? Have you filed police reports on any of this?
Police reports filed.
I, I understand the request.
Our board knows full, I mean, we're fully aware, we've been working with Lynn as, as best as we can help. Uh, I defer to our county, I know our county attorney's not here this morning, uh, but...
He's in his office.
Yeah, I, I defer to him on, on, uh, in regards to this lease, and how that, uh, that, how that works for private property. I guess that was, um, I don't want to, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I feel like that was, the lease didn't cover the private property.
Right, I know.
Situation, so...
Whitner was told not to go on that property four times. I have a witness that has Whitner on that property taking that rail. I can't get Whitner back down here. I want to settle this. I don't want to have to go to court over it. I'm willing to settle it. Quite easily. Come down, clean up your mess. Pays for the rail. He took the rail. I wasn't so insistent about getting paid for the rail. The more this goes on, the more I'm going to, going to be compensated for the rail. This is just out of control. Court, fine lit court process, they're just lying to me about it. The only thing he's doing is trying to bait, fight your time.
The conflict I got is, what Chris said, it's, it, our agreement, I, I understand your confusion, but the conflict I got is...
Private, public.
We're just talking about...
You guys...
Not on your property to starters.
Right.
Right, but they went from your property to our property, and if you pay them all of their money, they're going to not want us, they're not, we're never going to get them down to our property. If you hold back some of that money and just pay them a portion or whatever...
Or tell them to come down and talk to us, and then pay them. I don't care. I've got to have something to force these guys down here. Personally, I thought they'd walk away from the seventy thousand. I really did.
Hello? I'm at, I'm at a motion.
I'm not so sure Whitner's even licensed to operate in Iowa.
Who, I don't know who Whitner is.
Whitner works the salvage.
Salvage company.
They have to be, but...
Fine lit court process for Iowa River, where, uh, they were the general on this thing, and they've got to be held responsible.
Or we could look at a table and listen, talk to the county attorney on his opinion as well. Yeah, he's just in his office, said if we have any questions, we can go get him. Can we go grab him?
Yeah, why don't you go grab him? The only thing is, this is separate from private.
Is Rick in?
This deals with the public, even though I can understand where he's coming from.
Right.
Okay. Well, I guess I won't get him then. Well, he is not in right now. I don't have a problem tableing and talking to Rick, see what he says on this issue.
Is there an issue with you to table for a week?
It's been, I mean, it's not, no, that's fine.
Okay. All right.
Our board stands, if we want to do everything that we can to do to help our constituents and our neighbors, uh, in, in issues, um, you know, our, from way the lease reads, our hands are a little tied in this matter, unfortunately. We're doing all we can.
Right.
Chris has been working with me.
Been in contact.
Chris has been a lot of help for me on this. You know, we've worked back and forth on this. I've got to do something. I'm just asking, you know, I'm just a Arden County resident. I just want some help from supervisors on a bad situation. I don't want to drag this thing out in court, but I will, I have to. But if we go to court, it's going to screw a lot of things up for a long, lot of time, I'm afraid.
The, the conflict I got is you're probably going to have to go to court. From our standpoint, we don't have a legal standing, but I can check with Rick and see what he says on any of this.
Simple matters. You just call him and just let Brokemmer and Iowa River Railroad know that they need to do the right thing and just settle up with me. That's all I, I want. He doesn't think that I'm going to do anything about it, but I am. Last time I visited, we spoke to him was seventeen June, and he told me then that within thirty days, Whitner was going to be down here. I started calling him the twenty-seventh of July to try to figure out where Whitner was. I haven't heard a thing. I haven't even been able to talk to him. He's not available. I've left him countless messages. I've called the Iowa Department of Transportation, the Rail Division, and they called him and told, told them that they needed to do something about it. They were well aware, but Phil over there, Phil called me back and said,
That's what we need to have Rick look at.
We're going to try to get Whitner out here, which is a matter of settlement, because it's not correct. Because it isn't, it is private property. It is our siding.
Right.
And in this letter, there is a, that's one of the...
Statement five.
Statements in here is that Harding County would play no role in enforcing the dispute between the salvage of private, private property.
We'll have Rick look at that.
So we need to, I think, uh, I'll make the motion to table this until, until next week, so we can talk to Rick about this and maybe contact Mike Smith. And see if there is anything that we can do, but...
If it wasn't for them being there for the rail property, they would have never came on our property. That's, you know...
So...
And I, listen, I heard my husband, I was there, sitting in the vehicle with the window down, and him and one of the workers were talking, and Lynn specifically told them, you realize that this siding over here is private, and you're not allowed to take anything from there, so...
Okay, well, I'll, I'll make the motion to table this until next week.
Second.
I'll second.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Hearing no more, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion's tabled. Next, I have is change of statuses in community services. And I have two.
Like, wants to prove the change of status for Mary Nelson. This is a hire, I, no, a promotion, uh, pay increase, and, um, permanent part-time. And it's to replace Kathy Bitsek, who's re, who is retiring at the end of this month. And it's to replace Kathy Vidasek, who's re, who is retiring at the end of this month. Many years of service from Kathy, good years, so, um, hate to see her go, but, uh, new person on and she'll do well. Kathy Vidasek, uh, I'll also approve, want me to do both at once or do you want to go?
Let's just do the one at a time.
There you go.
Okay, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded for, uh, Mary Nelson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 We'll follow that up with, uh, making a motion to approve the change of status for Kathy Vidasek. Um, uh, this is retirement, uh, resignation at the end of this month and thank you very much for service that she's provided for years.
Agreed. Uh, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. She gave a nice letter. Hearing no one, no others. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next, we have a change of status in Treasurers' Office.
I will move to approve the hiring of Lisa DeBates, um, as a full-time clerk, treasurer's clerk. Um, at a salary of fourteen sixty-two with possible increases after a ninety-day performance, um, review and after six months, an increase not to exceed fifteen thirty-eight.
I will second.
And moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution for cancellation of outstanding warrants.
I will make the motion to approve the resolution for cancellation of outstanding warrants for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen fiscal year. Um, what? And then also one from June of two thousand fifteen, um, due to the fact it was issued to, in a prior fiscal year and was issued to the incorrect vendor, so it would make, make that correction.
And I will second that.
It's been, been moved and seconded. Any discussion? So some of these warrants out here, they have to reapply to get paid back. They have a cash check at some, sometime.
Yeah, the Iowa Court has this cancel outstanding warrants that have been outstanding for one year and then warrants that are canceled. Should the people say that that's their money, they have one year from the day of cancellation to provide to have that one year term?
One year?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have is, is a receipt of DNR determination on the Mallard Bay site, Scott Shager, section sixteen, Buckeye Township. And we're just acknowledging receipt.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the receipt to send the DNR termination, uh, Mallard Bay site, uh, Shager, sixteen, section sixteen, Buckeye Township.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, acknowledged receipt of DNR's determination. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next, we have is a fireworks permit.
I will move to approve the fireworks permit for Gerky Lakes and campground. Um, looks like they've set them off before. They haven't had training, but they have set them off before in previous years. Um, and they will be displayed on August eighth, two thousand fifteen, at Gerky's Lake.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? You just had one this month, too.
Yeah, I know.
I know, I thought so.
Must have had a good time?
Yeah. Huh. Hearing no more discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Utility permit, secondary roads. I have a permit seven twenty-two fifteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the Harding County utility permit application by Midland Power, uh, Corporation or Cooperative, sorry, for the purpose of boring and trenching electric service along tw- two-sixtieth street located in section twenty-nine Sherman Township.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Any other permits? Anything with secondary roads?
Nothing out of the ordinary.
Bicycles are off them. Uh, any other business? Hearing none?
I would like to just express my thanks for the county for sending Ron along on our DC trip. Uh, I do feel it was a successful trip. I don't know, Ron, if you want to mention anything, but, um, just wanted to thank you for seeing the foresight and seeing the value that you have to serve.
We, we talked, uh, just a brief, brief syn- synopsis of what we did, uh, in our department head meeting this morning, but, uh, I, I definitely want to thank you for all the work that you provided for us and how well organized you were and we were just meeting with, uh, our Iowa reps, uh, one after another and had a full day on Monday, but with very good response. Um, so I guess it's just luck from here on out, but we've, we've set the seeds and, and hope, hope for success on, on, on the grant, but, uh, a lot of, uh, research on your part and, and over the years and you've had, uh, a lot of compliments from our senators and congressmen, uh, on, on how well-prepared you were, so thank you.
Do we have any idea of how long before we may hear?
Yeah, we do.
They've been told by the DOT, September, October is what they're planning for as far as, uh, decision on those that they'll award, so, yeah, I think in a couple months.
I'll have to say, uh, Paul, you have a very nice daughter.
You were the one, okay.
I was the one.
Oh, any other business?
Uh, I should, I should go on and say that she works for, uh, Senator Grassley.
Um, hearing no other business, I'll ask for adjournment.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.